Good evening, everyone. I will call to order the Tuesday, November 11th, 2020, 2025 Regular Town Council Meeting. Ms. Pierce Garcia, will you take the role?
Mayor Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Mayor Pro-ten Luke Wagner.
Here.
Counselmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Counselmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Counselmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Everyone is present and accounted for. Counsel, any requests to amend the agenda this evening? All right, then we'll move on to our first item, testing. If I could please ask Chief Scott and Captain Jacobson to join me up here. So we are here today to welcome Captain Jacobson to the town of Timneth. Captain Jacobson is filling our brand-new position as captain and joining our leadership team headed by Chief Scott. Captain, we are so thrilled that you've chosen to come to Timneth. As I spoke with all of your many peers that were here, that are here this evening to support you, what has universally been expressed is that you are a tremendous individual and will be a tremendous asset to this town. You and I have spoken several times prior to this, and I have just been so encouraged as we talked about philosophy, law enforcement, the importance of trust in community, the importance in transparency, and the importance above all of doing the right thing. And I am just so pleased that you are here to join our tremendous town. With that, I would like to turn it over to Chief Scott. Chief, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. Obviously, we wouldn't be here today without the support of our town leadership and our town manager, so I certainly am grateful for their support. Similar to what the mayor said, I think that even the turnout today speaks to the character of this man standing up next to me. I am beyond grateful that he chose to come here and looks so forward to the future. For those of you that don't know him, I just have a few facts. First of all, he loves attention, and he really wishes more people were here. Beyond that, he began his career as a cadet in Loveland, so clearly he had a goal in mind, and he is achieving every single step of the way. He went to Boulder County, where he was a sheriff there, was in patrol as a patrol deputy, a canine handler, and DUI enforcement deputy. From there, he moved on to Loveland, where he served as a patrol officer, a field training officer, detective and sergeant in our Northern Colorado Drug Task Force, and ended his career there as a lieutenant overseeing several specialized units, including the Criminal Impact Unit, School Resource Officers, the Drug Task Force, Victims Advocate Unit, and our Chaplain Program. Having had the privilege of working with him for almost five years, I'm not going to lie, this was an easy choice. So again, he is going to bring amazing things to Timneth. His leadership, his character, and his ethics, I bar none. So without further ado, we're going to swear him in. I'd like to ask his wife Tessa and his daughter Tegan to come up. All right, if you would raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Chris Jacobson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of captain.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of captain.
For the town of Timneth, State of Colorado.
For the town of Timneth, State of Colorado.
That I will serve with honor, integrity, and fairness.
That I will serve with honor, integrity, and fairness.
Treating all people with dignity and respect.
Treating all people with dignity and respect.
That I will lead by example.
That I will lead by example.
Hold myself and others accountable.
Hold myself and others accountable.
And dedicate my efforts to the safety, trust, and well-being.
And dedicate my efforts to the safety, trust, and well-being.
Of the residents of the town of Timneth. And that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability and judgment. So help me God. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting Captain Jacobson. We appreciate all of you. All right, as folks are filtering out here, our next agenda item will be public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members to address counsel on any item that does not otherwise have an opportunity for public comment. Today, the only public hearing item is 8A, the ordinance amending the GID establishing ordinance. So if you'd like to speak to any other agenda item or anything else pertaining to town business, you are welcome to do so. Each speaker has three minutes, and it looks like we have three people signed up. First, I'll ask Mr. Nerling to join us. Sir, thank you for being here, and I'll just let you know that I did share your email with all the council as well.
Thank you, and I'm glad the police left because of the ticket. So, thank you for the opportunity. So, I should almost apologize to the council for taking up the time to discuss what admittedly is a minor issue with respect to a parking code violation I received, but at the same time, the council should know how frustrating and disappointing my experience was. Due to this three-minute time limit, I will forego all the mitigating details as the mayor and Mr. Jenkins received one from me, and now apparently all three of the others have. In summary, I believe that there were mitigating circumstances that the police and the prosecutor should have taken into account. The car was parked in front of my house, no one else's. It was not impeding the free and safe flow of traffic on the street. Yes, it was parked in the wrong direction. The officer giving the ticket did so at midnight, from what I was told on routine patrol. I would not have expected a knock on the door at that hour, but what I would expect is little grace and perhaps a business card left on the windshield instead, asking for the car to be moved as soon as possible. I did not expect the officer to know that the car had mechanical trouble and other mitigating factors that I detailed in my email. The car was not in any way impeding traffic or presenting a safety concern. Thus, a warning would have been sufficient, in my opinion. And as I have recently learned, the council receives from the police a monthly recap of traffic stops, tickets issued, and warnings issued in the town. From that, I take it the police do have discretion and sometimes offer grace in stopping people. Also, I know personally of another incident in my neighborhood this past summer where a house had a violation of the town's noise ordinance and was only given a warning. Upon discovering the ticket the following morning, I immediately contacted the police to discuss. I spoke with Sergeant Richards, who was willing to listen to my mitigating factors, which I appreciated. I did ask what the chances were of just getting it dismissed, given the circumstances. He indicated that it would not be possible, but he would do some checking with the town court clerk to see what would be the best way to proceed. He did call me back. He informed me that the town court clerk suggested if I wanted to challenge the ticket, to come on the appearance date and ask to talk to the prosecutor before court and explain the circumstances. So that's what I did on November 6th. Upon arrival, I was able to speak and explain my side of the story to the town court clerk. She was helpful, and she said she would speak to the prosecutor. The council should also know that while waiting with the other dozen or so people in the lobby to enter the courtroom, the prosecutor arrived and was stopped by the security guard so that he could screen her before entering the courtroom, something we were all required to do. Her response was, "But I'm the prosecutor," to which the security guard apologized but told her his instructions were that everyone was to be screened. It appeared to me she was rather indignant and put out with having to go through screening, not a good look in front of the public. Upon entering the courtroom, I was called up by the town court clerk, and I was told I could speak with the prosecutor one-on-one in a room off the courtroom. Upon entering, I was met with, in my opinion, a rather unsympathetic, inflexible prosecutor...
And sir, I'll ask you to wrap up.
Yes.
Use your time.
She had an attitude. She offered that I had to pay the $45 fine, and that I was guilty, and she would forego the coke costs. She felt that was being flexible. I did not. I'll skip the rest, and in final, again, I am disappointed and frustrated that such a minor, minor offense was handled in this way. I would hope in the future more grace and discretion would be shown instead.
Thank you, sir. We very much appreciate you sharing your thoughts and experience with us. You know, we certainly all have listened to what you've said. Also, the chief of police is present here and has heard as well. I also did forward your email to her.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Garrett Morgan.
Garrett Morgan, Jedidiah Drive. Two things. I want to commend the town for bringing up some nice dark-sky rules with the lighting. I think as this progresses, I think we're going to see some good effects, or less effects of the light predominantly. I would like to know who to reach out to. I was glancing over the regulations, and I wasn't quite sure exactly when this is going to go into effect, and who to contact in case there is an issue with the lighting of the particular neighborhood. So I would be interested to find that. So thank you all for getting that through. Second issue is maybe a little less fun concerning the flock cameras that are installed in Timneth. I've just learned about them, and I know Fort Collins has them all over. I didn't really pay any mind to it, so I started looking up the map. We have them in Timneth. Gives me a little pause for concern. I don't really know what they're doing here. I don't know why we feel we need them. I know that we, the taxpayers, are paying for them, and we don't have access to the data. This is concerning to me because I don't know who is accessing our data and who can tell where I have been and where I'm going and what time I get home. I just don't feel that that should be information privy to just a few people. So I would like to know who authorized the flock cameras and how much longer is our contract with them, and when can we get them removed?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments this evening. If you'd like to follow up with Mr. Stone, he is our Public Works Director. Mr. Robinson is our Community Development Director. They can probably speak to some of your first inquiries, and then the chief would probably be the best one to answer your questions about the flock program.
Okay, well, I look forward to figuring this out.
Thank you, sir. Next, Dennis Strakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just wanted to just say a few words to publicly acknowledge the contributions made of those individuals who helped with the campaign to get the REC Center ballot measure passed. And specifically, we had about 85 people who, among other things, offered to take lawn signs, volunteered their time, or made a financial contribution. And I certainly appreciate their efforts, and I know that they're going to appreciate the existence of the facility. I also want to acknowledge the contributions made by Together for Timneth, Guide Our Growth, and Landmark Homes. And of course, my fellow committee members who served on the Citizens for the Timneth Recreation Center, Lauren Saltzman, Reverend Jonathan Iterbach, Irv Christie, and Gary Spearier. And I also need to recognize our campaign advisor, Skylar White, who did an excellent job in terms of advising us and helping us with producing some of the campaign material. And lastly, just my congratulations to the council for, you know, having this vision for a facility that will serve this community and the neighborhoods for decades to come, thinking big and realizing that a facility of this type should be built to the size that we need for many years to come and not staged over, you know, several decades. So I congratulate you on making that decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, those are the three folks I had signed up. Before we move on, I'll ask if there's anybody else present that did not sign up but would like to address counsel this evening. Not seeing anyone, then we will move on to our next item, which is the consent agenda. It consists of one item, approval of the October 28, 2025 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Any requests to remove an item from the consent agenda? Their motion to approve the consent agenda is read.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All who is in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes, and we will now move on to mayor and council reports. I want to first start off and acknowledge that today is Veterans Day. You know, it is really a humbling thing to sit up here as an elected official, living in the great country that we do, that would not be possible without the sacrifices of all those who have served and continue to serve. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and sincerely thank everyone who has made our country what it is. Second item, I appreciate Mr. Strakota mentioning it, is ballot measure 3A appears to have passed. The clerk will certify that later this week, early next week, but we do expect that it has passed. You know, this was a huge effort by a lot of people, and I just wanted to recognize all the town staff that put effort into this, specifically Parks and Rec Director Tom Kassal and his team, you know, countless hours researching the project, putting on the community forums, and really giving the community the information that they needed to make an educated decision. Also, our finance director, Mr. Gagnari, who, you know, helped really look at what would it take to fund this sort of thing, what are the options, and crunching the numbers there, as well as legal counsel, Ms. Steffel, making sure that we got the ballot measure right, and all the things that went into that. And those are just three people, team members, but this, you know, really, really was a town-wide effort, and I appreciate everybody who helped us prepare a package that the community could then make a decision on. I want to thank all the community members that showed up, asked good questions, really put us to the test to make sure that, you know, we're considering something that makes sense. I appreciate the Citizens Committee that formed independently, and I think 85 different folks contributed to that, as well as all the advisory committees along the way. And then I want to thank my fellow council members. You know, each of you have helped to move this forward through all of our meetings, through asking the tough questions, through engaging with the citizen surveys, and, you know, really being thoughtful about this. The work is just beginning, and I was on a call with Tom earlier today. I've asked him at our next council meeting to speak a little bit about what the next steps are and what that'll look like, so we can all get an update there, and the community can know what to expect moving forward. So those are my updates. Counselmember Mike, councilmember Holt.
I'll echo just the, you know, the congratulations to so many involved in bringing a REC Center to life. Saw the big smile on Tom's face when you said, "Now the work begins," because that is the truth. You know, in theory, we've got some good designs, but really honing in on what's it going to look like, where, you know, where is it going to go, all that good stuff, and what's going to be inside. And then just, you know, letting the town know that, you know, our job and our goal up here as council is to be as transparent as humanly possible. When that comes to fees, when that comes to getting advice from them or opinions as to what they want, that will all be accounted for, right? So this is step one in many steps, but the ultimate goal is to bring amenities in Timneth to Timneth residents. I heard numerous comments of, "Why do we need it if our neighboring towns have it?" We don't live in our neighboring towns. We live here in Timneth, and we want Timneth residents to have really good amenities here in their own town. So kudos to those that voted. I think the number was well over 4,000, if I'm not mistaken, so definitely one of the higher-attended polls, which is awesome. I always like to see those numbers increases. That means more people are paying attention and more residents have an opinion, and at the end of the day, the majority said, "We want it." So now let's build this thing, let's build it the right way, and let's enjoy it for many years to come.
Counselmember Jenkins.
Yeah, so I have several things. The NFR, NPO meeting, we had a presentation from the Colorado Transportation Investment Office. Those are the folks that own and operate the express lanes in Colorado. They're also the ones that collect $3 a day on rental cars specifically for congestion mitigation, which has contributed to the ability to build and improve the express lanes. There are over 33 million individual vehicles that have used the express lanes and over 47 million trips in the HOV Plus. There will be coming to our segment, it's now no longer December, now January, for the initial charging. It'll probably start mid-January. They also are planning on time, on dynamic pricing, which they claim you won't notice, but if you drive on a regular basis, I'm betting you will notice. Something that I didn't recognize, that anybody that tows a boat or an RV might be interested in, and that is there is a $25 per segment if you're towing four axles, which is most trailers. So if you just have two, three axles, trailer with one extra axle, you won't get the $25 charge. But that's every segment, which if you're driving into Denver with a vehicle, that's going to be over 100 bucks. Toll rates. The toll rates are going to be roughly between $1 and $4.71 and $4.75 if you have an account. If you don't, and you're doing license plate, it'll be between $2 and $9. And they will start enforcing the double white line with a civil penalty of 75 bucks as soon as they start collecting tolls, so don't cross the double white line. They will have a 30-day grace period starting in January for the, as required by law, for the crossing the double white lines. You'll get a warning after the 30 days, you'll get a ticket. On Friday, I visited several open spaces in surrounding areas, looking at various design features and human-wildlife co-use, and I just want to thank the staff for arranging this. There were several members, the Planning Commission, that also attended this. It was very, very interesting. And then, since you already mentioned Veterans Day, that's great. There are several veterans in my family. Timmeth Cubs Football made the 3A playoffs for the first time in Timneth High School history. They play number three, Palisade, on November 15th. Go Cubs!
Go Cubs! Thank you. Mayor Pro-ten Wagner.
I just want to comment on the REC Center, too. I want to thank town manager Aaron on that as well. Thank you for your work, Aaron. I also want to thank all the staff that we don't get to see up here as council for all their hard work. I know there's a lot of work that happened behind the scenes and that happens during the day that we don't get to see at 6:00. the day that we don't get to see at 6 o'clock on a Tuesday night, so I'm sure Lisa, your staff, did a lot of work that we don't get to see, and Tom, your staff. So I want to say thank you so much, because that was a lot of work. It was probably tiring. I know for us, it was very nerve-wracking, watching those numbers every four hours come in, so I want to just thank all of the town for this. So, and I'm excited, I'm really excited for what this has to offer. You know, we were at a regional elected officials meeting, and it was kind of competition, but I think for this town, it kind of shows how we're progressing and growing, and how we're growing into what we need to be, and this is the step in the right direction. So I'm really excited for Timneth.
Thank you. Anything else before we move on? All right. We have a hefty one this evening, so buckle up. We'll begin with 7A, Resolution Number 65, Series 2025, a resolution approving the agreement with Angel Light Pyrotechnics LLC for the 4th of July fireworks show. Hello?
Um, all right. I'll get my slide. All right. This is to reserve the 2026 4th of July fireworks show date and to receive priority in custom fireworks inventory. A contract with this vendor must be signed before the final budget next month. The agreement will be for the 4th of July fireworks show located at the Timneth Reservoir, beginning in 2026, for the price of $115,000, and will have the option for us to renew for the additional four years until 2030. Pricing each year will cover the labor, supplies, insurance, and necessary, it's necessary to produce a professional show. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Yeah, just, I have one question. How does the price compare to last year?
This price has increased from last year due to the tariffs that we are seeing. The tariffs have not come in yet. We will know the exact pricing in January, so this is the absolute max that we will have to spend. We will know our guaranteed price in January, which will hopefully be lower.
Okay, so, but the maximum price is 115,000. What did we pay last year?
100.
100, so 15%. Got it.
This is to create a show that matches last year's.
This is a how many year contract, or I guess we can, it's a one-year, but we can renew it?
Yeah, we can renew it up to four years.
Do we, is there the ability to lock in that maximum rate for four years?
No, so each year will be dependent on what the pricing comes in at. Majority of our fireworks come from overseas, and so our firework vendor gets those final prices in January, and that's when we'll know each year. We can obviously tell him what our maximum budget is, and then go from there and kind of fiddle with our show, but we won't know until January of each year.
And remind me, so our show is tied to music, right? So I know in the past, we've trimmed a song to save a certain number of dollars, so on and so forth. Playing around with the dollar amount means more or less boom and light during each song, correct?
Yeah, so we can fiddle with the length of the show, or we can fiddle with how many fireworks that we shoot off at any given moment. Right now, we've got about an 18-minute show, and that was with cutting back to fit into our budget last year, and that's what we're planning to have again this year with the pyro musical.
Yeah. You don't realize how long it is. 18 minutes seems like a long time. That's, that's pretty good. And then how do we compare? I mean, I think our show's the best. How do we compare with Loveland and Fort Collins and the others? I mean, are we on par cost-wise? Do we know that?
We, we have a larger show than majority of the surrounding towns. What allows us to have a larger show is because we have a larger location. So that's bigger shells, costs more money. City of Loveland right now doesn't have a show. That's supposedly coming back, but who knows? But we are definitely larger than Fort Collins. City Park is small.
So, might be going off track, my apologies, just thinking as you're speaking. My concern is we are that cool, and people want to come hang out with us. How do we, maybe just something to put on your radar, how do we prioritize accessibility for Timneth residents for our show if other towns are doing away? We have a massive influx of people coming, make sure that we have room, space, accessibility, parking, all that for Timneth residents over? Is that something to consider? To me, I would like to see that if we run into an issue with other towns that can't afford it, and everybody wants to come here.
We can consider that.
Yeah, just something to, something to think about, but appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Then is there a motion to approve a resolution approving the agreement with Angel Light Pyrotechnics for the 4th of July fireworks show?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Holt, your motion?
No, I'm a, I'm a big supporter. Unfortunately, my wife decides to take us out of the state the last two years, so I haven't been able to see it, but we'll make sure we're here this year. I think we still have, we've all set it up here. Timneth has the best events. 4th of July is the flagship, so I think this, you know, although it's an increase, we don't like those. I mean, it's within reason, and hopefully we can get that number down as, you know, maybe tariffs aren't as high or, you know, cost comes down, but I think it's appropriate for where things are.
Yeah, so I'm definitely going to be voting in support of this. I think Angel Light Pyrotechnics has provided, like, for us as a town, safe, high-quality fireworks shows for Timneth for many years. You know, I appreciate that staff included strong, what the rationale for limiting competition, so that's why we're looking for a four-year and why we have to do it now. So I think this is a smart step, ensuring that we have that for our town for next year. So I just appreciate that we're going to put it in there now, and we'll look to the 2026 budget for it.
I'll also support this for the reasons stated. I'll note that our total budget on that event is over 300,000, and so fireworks is a component of everything else that goes into making that happen. Yeah, I think we'll want to keep an eye on price in the future, but if we can lock this in for 2026 within 15% of last year, given the tariff situation, I think it makes sense. All those in favor of approving the resolution for the fireworks agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, nay? Carries five zero.
Thank you, guys.
Move on to Resolution Number 66, Series 2025, a resolution approving the Ladera Business Improvement District's 2026 operating plan and budget and amendment to 2025 budget.
Thank you. As you recall, the town council approved organization of the Ladera Business Improvement District, which is a separate political subdivision of the state and has its own board of directors. The town council approved this organization in 2021, and one of the statutory requirements is that every year they come back to the council and ask for approval of an updated operating plan and budget. The operating plan has a lot of the similar restrictions that a service plan would have for a metropolitan district, and the budget, of course, changes every year. The operating plan for 2026 is very similar to 2025. Some of the major updates are, there was a new statutory limitation on the amount you could collect from mill levies for operation purposes, and that could be waived by voters. They updated the operating plan to say it had been waived by the voters in May of 2025. They also had been projecting a bond issuance this year of $30 million. They are now planning to either issue that, those bonds yet this year in the fourth quarter or in the first quarter of next year, and are now estimating it'll be closer to 25 million. Both of those are under the aggregate mill, aggregate debt totals that they're authorized to collect and to borrow. They are also planning to impose a mill levy for the first time. That would be paying for that debt service, which would be 25 mills as adjusted for any changes in the method of calculation of the SS valuation from the time of organization of the Business Improvement District in 2021, so it might be a little higher than 25 mills. And then they are, the budget items are up there. They're similar to other years, except for they'll have the capital improvement costs, because they'll be expecting to issue bonds, and they have their debt repayment costs and debt issuance costs are going to start next year. They also have asked for an amendment to the 2025 budget, because they have more general fund expenditures than they had projected at the time that that was presented to you last year, so the amendment would increase it by a little over $44,000, and those are the changes. They're both approved together in one resolution. And I can answer any questions.
Questions? So Carolyn, when you say that voters waived the 5.25% limit, those are the voters in the district, which is essentially the board of that district?
That's correct. So it's the people who have been authorized to be the voters within the district, and so there's probably approximately three individuals and their spouses. That would be the same as the board of directors. I will also point out that I believe the attorney for the BID is here virtually, should you have any questions for that attorney as well.
Mayor Pro Tem? I just wanted to ask two questions, just to make sure that 25 mills as adjusted from the, is that the same mill levy essentially? When you say as adjusted, can you just kind of describe what that means?
So the mill levy assessment rate does change a little bit over time. It would have been 27 mills for commercial property in 2021, and it's now probably 26.8? So it hasn't changed much for commercial. It does change more for residential, but this would be, of course, all commercial property, because it's within a business improvement district. As the SS valuation goes down, the rate may come up a little bit over that to allow them to collect the same amount of money they could have collected had that mill levy assessment percentage not changed, property assessment.
So the mill levies have adjusted, but the collection dollars are the same? Is that what you mean by that?
So they are able to collect the same amount of money they would have collected had the assessment rate stayed at 27% with the current actual value of the property.
Just a related question. As more properties come online in the business development district, that would affect the mill levy as well, since the target is, the target for their budget is to pay the debt and operating costs, correct?
So they're going to be, yes, as the SS valuation would increase, because more development would come out, they might be able to collect less revenue to, I guess it depends on the way the bonds are structured. If they, for instance, have subordinate debt, that may be only paid if they collect more, so I don't know, or it might be a phase collection, so they're going to have to collect enough to repay the debt. And I believe that they can also do a small operating mill levy as well, but it's subject to an aggregate mill levy limit.
And I think it's said in our packet, the general fund expenditures, the amendment there was audit and water, just to clarify, is that right? Is that what was in our packet, the 44.7, is that right? Just to make sure we clarify what the amendment was for 44,000.
Can you rephrase that again?
Sorry, the amendment to the budget for 44,700 was audit and water fees, is that correct? I think that's what was in our packet. Is that correct? Okay, perfect. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
... BID, and the amendment to the 2025 budget is to the general fund. We, they had adopted a budget stating the expenditures would be $100,000, and they're amending that, so it's $144,720. And that is to account for additional costs for water. It looks like snow removal, insurance, accounting, and audit costs is what I'm seeing on the budget.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution approving the Ladera Business Improvement District's 26 operating plan and budget and amendment to the 2025 budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Lake? I'll just note for the record, as Carolyn did, that this is essentially the same plan as last year, although they actually decreased the proposed amount of bond issuance, which I hope shows that there's some forethought and responsibility going on there. But these are improvements to the area. This Business Improvement District will fund improvements to the area that are absolutely necessary for that whole project to be successful. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the resolution approving the Ladera Business Improvement District's operating plan, budget, and amendment to the 2025 budget signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, nay? Carries unanimously. Next is item 7C, first reading and setting a public hearing on December 9, 2025, at 6:00 PM for ordinance number 22, Series 2025, ordinance approving annual salary for the town mayor and council members. I will note that normally, first reading, we just kind of have the presentation and don't do a lot of questions or discussions. I think this evening, there is a desire to discuss the terms of this, and so we'll, we'll plan on doing that.
Okay, during the budget work session, this was a topic that was discussed, and there was consensus on bringing something forward related to council pay. For the Home Rule Charter, you need an ordinance to increase any council pay. Currently, the council members are not paid. The next council elections are April 2026 and November 2028. The current ordinance is drafted so that the council pay will actually start in January 2029, after the November 2028 election, so that everyone on the council will get paid at the same time. We performed an analysis against other municipalities to derive the recommended base salary. The ordinance allows for market adjustments annually from the 2026 base, and based on the 2026 base, it would be as follows. Mayor, $2,600 per year. Mayor Pro Tem, $2,200, and council members, $2,100. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions about the resolution itself?
You might just mention the towns that were used for comparison. I presume they're similar size?
Yes, we used Firestone, Fort Lepton, Frederick, Longmont, Lewisville, Loveland, Windsor, Erie, Estes Park, and Evans.
Thank you.
All right, so if we'd like to discuss the terms of this procedurally, I think the first thing to do would be to take a motion and get a second, and then at that time, a discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about that. So if we wanted to amend the terms as far as like a start date, should we first move to approve and then decide, or how does, how does that work on the first reading?
So you can do it either way. So you could move to approve it with, probably this is move to approve it and amend it, but you could also move to approve it with an, with a change, if that's the way you'd like to move.
This time, is there a motion to approve on first reading and set a public hearing on December 9, 2025, at 6:00 PM for an ordinance approving annual salary for the town mayor and council members?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then we will move to discussion, including any discussion of proposed amendments.
So thank you for looking into this and looking at all comparable communities. I know we're probably in this area anyway, one of the last communities to actually pay our council. In this area anyway, one of the last communities to actually pay our council members. And I know I've mentioned in the past that, that I feel pretty strongly that. I don't want finances to be a reason that somebody doesn't run for council. Most of us up here have at certain times. Needed to, whether it's take time off from work, whether it's finding somebody to watch our children during those times. There's definitely a time commitment and I want all community members to be able to run without worrying about that. And I will be, either me or if somebody else does, making a suggestion to amend it to start as soon as possible. Since all of us up here would not be eligible for that, I feel like it's appropriate to start it for those who are running in. The April 26 election timeframe. Just so that it is not a barrier for anyone to, to run for council.
Member Holt?
Also, yes, thanks for looking into this. You know, it's often called the best unpaid job you could possibly have up here as council and mayor and mayor pro tem. It's extremely rewarding, but you know, there are months where there's almost 40 hours of time put into it, right? So although it's a minimal amount, it definitely to council member Lake's point. We want the right people in this seat elected by their, you know, their fellow citizens. And we don't want things to get in the way of, of that happening. And if it, you know, takes some payment in order to make that make sense to some folks, that absolutely makes sense. I know there, there are some towns that, you know, have a, a four digit, or sorry, a five digit number, right? Or, or more. I don't think that that's necessary. I don't think that we need to collect second salaries to be up here. But some compensation for the time effort and allowing others to partake when they might, you know, not financially be able to, I think this makes total sense.
Other comments?
No, I, I think it makes sense to. And the compensation is in the right ballpark. You know, nobody's, nobody, nobody's going to see it as a second job. That's not a monthly basis. That's an annual number, correct?
Right.
Just so everybody is clear about that. You know, anything worth doing is, is worth doing for money, really. So I, I think it's, it's appropriate. As far as the timing of when it starts, I think when this was discussed last time in public at council. Or in the work session, I think I said, I don't care as long as it, it starts. With newly elected members, whether that's in April of 26 or January of 29. I don't have a problem with it. Either start date. So whatever the council's preferences are, I'd go along with.
Yeah, I won't, I won't comment on it, but I agree. As far as, I mean, I will comment, but I, I think I will agree with everything that's said tonight so far of. Just making sure that people have the opportunity to sit behind. This podium up here and. Be a part of this community and be a part of the decision-making that happens in this community. You know, I, I think going back to our previous work session, I think the idea was to start as soon as possible. If that's kind of what we came to, I, I will stand by that decision. I, I think it's kind of, if we're going to start, then let's start. When we do it in 2026, but if there's hesitation to do it for equality, that's fine. I will move forward with it. I think that's fine. I have, it's not for me to necessarily need this money. I, again, will do it as part of my dedication of this community. But I will support doing it in 2026 if that's what everybody wants to do. And I think that that's a fair way to move forward.
I also am supportive of. Payment for council, what has been proposed. No way it equates to the work that goes into what happens here, but, but I do think it is symbolically important to show that. Work is being done. With complete sacrifice. So I, I think it makes sense. The, the dollar amounts make sense relative to other councils. For me, taking it out of this council and these persons, these personalities. For me, it comes down to. What is fair? And I am concerned that we raise fairness concerns. If some council members are being compensated while others are not. And so my suggestion is that we institute it at a time when. Particular date happens and on that date. Council is, is compensated. I understand. Others may feel otherwise, would like to see this start sooner rather than later. I know that all of us sitting up here are not in it for the pay and it's not about that, that people sitting next to us may be getting compensated while, while we're not. But for me, it's just kind of looking at what, what is the fair way to do it? So that being said, at this point I would ask, are there any proposed amendments?
I move to amend the item to have pay start with those elected in the April 26 election.
And Miss Steffel, I had asked you to be prepared with language to that effect. Do you have a specific suggestion?
Yes, I think. We can strike in the ordinance beginning on January 1, 2029. And just add instead, the salary shall not, so I'll say, the salary should not be paid to sitting council members for their current term, but will be paid to any council member elected or reelected. As mayor, mayor pro tem or other council member after the date hereof. Including those elected in April 2026, November 2028 or thereafter. And we could, if you want, we could say beginning May 1, 2026.
Okay, so beginning May 1. So just replace January 1, 2029 with May 1, 2026?
Yes.
Is that elected after or when? Yeah, because the election is in April, so that effectively would, would move it. Where anybody elected in April, if we had May 1. As the date, it wouldn't apply to those people that were elected in the April election.
I think the way I, well, I can wordsmith it so that it works just fine, but I think it means that's the date that the pay would start. And then it does go on to say, including those elected in April 2026.
Okay.
So. The proposed amendment is to change the effective date essentially to May 1, 2026 with the understanding that. The intent is for people who are elected in April to be compensated. So. There is that proposed amendment. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Amendment has been moved and seconded beyond what we've already discussed. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment to change the effective date to May 1, 2026 signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, nay? Nay. The amendment carries four to one. So we are now back with the main motion before us. Which would be to approve the resolution as amended. So to approve the resolution with the May 1 effective date. Before I. Call the question there, I'll ask, does anyone have further comment they'd like to make? All those in favor of approving. The ordinance proving annual salary for town mayor and council members as amended to become effective May 1, 2026 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? The amended ordinance passes and technically that's a pass on first reading. And setting the public hearing and second reading for December 9th at 6:00 PM. You get that right, Steffel? All right, very good. Moving on to item 7D, first reading and setting a public hearing on December 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for ordinance number 23, series 2025. An ordinance to amend the 2024 International Fire Code.
Mayor, council. Just want to give a quick update. This is based on feedback from Deputy Chief Sean McGaffin from. Fire Authority. As you recall, council recently adopted the 2024 International Fire Code this past July. There are some amendments to that code. Mostly these are to make some minor corrections and. Clarifications in text in the attached ordinance. Those are indicated through strike through or highlighted text. It is also deleting in its entirety, chapter 10, the fire code, which is. Kind of redundant with some of the code revisions in the international building codes. Which are generally enforced through the building department in their permitting process. If you have any questions, I'm going to defer to subject matter expert. Division Chief McGaffin. So with that, that's all I have. Thanks.
You know, could, so the International Fire Code has not been amended. We adopted it and the proposal here is to amend what we had adopted away from the international code.
We adopted the, updated the fire code to the 2024 and this is an amendment to make some minor corrections to the code that we currently are within. The 2024 International Fire Code.
And Chief, this is a first reading, of course, but can you give us kind of the, the highlights of why these amendments are prudent?
Yeah, sorry. Most of this is coming from the electrical, electrical code is not being adopted yet. So the ICC electrical code took a lot longer to get adopted. Than the IBC or the IFC. So we adopted originally long before they did. So with those changes that came in into chapter 10, as Scott talked about, and thank you Scott for all your assistance on all of this. We were now, we were now enforcing things that the IBC should be enforcing. So we had to get rid of those out of ours to follow theirs. And then one of the biggest things, which me being new in my position, I've only been here a couple of years. Is I learned the difference from firewall to fire barrier, which is significant difference in words. And so we had to adjust a certain part of a code. That allowed the customers to have a much better way of working with stuff. So. Outside of that, it was fire code official. It was very simple words outside of that. So. I mean, I'm new. I was just learning.
Council have a full hearing, but any other questions on this? Is there a motion to approve on first reading and to set a public hearing on December 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM? For ordinance number 23, series 2025, an ordinance to amend the 2024 International Fire Code.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, passes and we will be back for public hearing December 9th at 6:00 PM.
Maybe you could tell us the difference between the fire barrier and the firewall.
I'd love to because it's crazy, the difference. A fire barrier goes into the attic space of a town home. It's only required to be 30 inches into the space in the attic. But that doesn't spread, like fire still spreads across the top of it. So we wrote into our code that it has to be fire barrier to the deck of the roofing. A firewall has to go 30 inches above it. So every town home that you're building out here around the bean. Would have these crazy walls that are just not, they're just not needed. They're not needed. That's it.
And on item 7E, first reading setting a public hearing on December 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for ordinance number 24, series 2025. An ordinance amending chapter four of the town municipal code.
Yes, this is to update our sales tax code pursuant to the ballot issue related to the rec center that just passed. There's various amendments in the code that increase the tax rate by the 1.25% that was voted on. The effective date of that will be January 1, 2026 and those rates are shown in the table. All other existing exemptions under the code will remain the same. And then just as a reminder, these will remain in effect until the latest date of December 31st, 2056. But council can. Ah, sorry, move to amend those and reduce those at an earlier date should the debt be paid off sooner.
Questions on this? Thank you very much for your work on this. It's exciting that, that we're voting on this. This time is there a motion to approve on first reading and set a public hearing on December 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for ordinance number 24, series 2025. An ordinance amending chapter four of the town municipal code.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, the motion carries and we'll be back on December 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for public hearing. Item 7F, first reading and setting a public hearing on December 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for ordinance number 25, series 2025. An ordinance summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund. Adopting a budget and appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amount and for the purposes as set forth below for the town of Tinmouth, Colorado. Calendar year beginning the first day of January 2026 and ending the last day of December 2026.
That's a mouthful. Since this is the first reading, I'm going to be very high level and just go through some bullet points. And then if there's anything that you would like to see prior to final adoption, I'd like to have those discussions now or we can. You can email me this week, but I would like to get everything on the table prior to adoption at the next meeting. Just as a reminder, this was the budget process that we followed. The draft budget was presented to council at a work session on October 7th. Where we went into a lot of detail on the budget. It was publicized on the website, social media and the weekly newsletter after that October 7th date up until last week. Public input was collected and they're incorporated in your packet for consideration. We'll finalize the budget, including the 2025 estimates and present a final budget at December 9th. After that, we will prepare a budget brief and a budget book for the public and submit to the state and to GFOA after the budget is adopted. When we went over the 2026 budget, we included five-year financial projections and those included a structurally balanced budget through 2030. It included forecasting the expiration of the TDA in 2029. Given those conditions, we maintained a 25% working reserve through 2030 per our policy. It does anticipate a debt issuance in 2027 of up to $14 million for infrastructure projects. Some infrastructure projects are required to be built now and then we're paid later. So that is why that financing may be necessary. Well, it will be necessary. The amount may vary. We projected minimal income growth to protect against potential economic downturn and just an uncertain economy that we're facing. Funds capital improvement plans utilizing all restricted resources prior to general fund obligations. So what that means is we're utilizing impact fees, we're utilizing TDA. We're utilizing developer reimbursements and any other restricted funds before we use the general fund obligations. Some key points in the budget. Now that the rec center ballot has passed, we will. Establish a new special revenue fund for the recreation center. That includes financing proceeds, dedicated sales tax, debt service and engineering and design for 2026. We added 4.5 new FTE from the 2025 base. And we fund pay increases for staff and, for staff and then also retirement and health insurance. I will note that what we projected in the budget for health insurance will not occur. We just finalized the health insurance contracts this week. We just finalized the health insurance contracts this week, and so those will actually remain flat, if not go down a little bit. So there will be savings there. And then, it funds capital improvement plan utilizing restricted resources prior to general fund obligations. And with that, if there's any questions, comments, I'll take those.
All right, and this is first reading, however, the budget obviously is a very important matter. So I suppose I would encourage those that do have questions now to.
Yeah, with regard to revenue projections, you said flat. Do you mean zero percent, or do you mean like two or three percent?
Minimal growth, so I projected three percent for sales tax, although some of our revenue related to building permit fees is actually going down. And there are some other state revenue that we get that are going down, like severance tax and mineral lease, which is a small part of our budget, but those are essentially seventy-five percent down.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Not to get into the weeds, but as Ladera grows and as our neighboring buildings get filled up here too, I know some of that is fastly approaching, specifically restaurants. Of the understanding, we didn't do any tax breaks similar to what we did with Costco or Walmart or anything like that. So we should be receiving, as In-N-Out and other restaurants come in, full tax on those, or are we?
No, there is a fifty percent on Ladera for phase one.
Okay.
Up to five million dollars and a date.
One week.
Yeah, so we'll get fifty percent until they reach that cap.
Okay, and that's figured in here. So I know of the buildings, seems like most of them are going up. Do we know how many new potential businesses we will have in twenty-six?
I don't know, I think the only ones that are under construction currently are GQ Barbecue. And I know, I don't think In-N-Out is under construction yet, so those were not forecasted in the budget.
Yeah, actually, In-N-Out is under construction.
Looks to be, at least there's two buildings over there that are, it doesn't spray paint, In-N-Out, it's the fanciest sign I've ever seen. So again, a modest prediction of three percent, but if those get up and running, we could, could see that grow, which is great.
Absolutely.
The four and a half FTEs, I know those based on openings, is that mostly our police department? Or can you maybe shed some light on exactly what those are? And then my other question would be maybe in conjunction with that, whether it's you, Lisa, or Tom, just because the rec center's passed, we don't really need any staff for the rec center, obviously, as of yet? Or is there a design element or people working on that? What does that look like for Parks and Rec?
Okay, sure, so the two new staff, the new staff positions, two are in PD, one administrative tech, one sergeant. We have one parks maintenance worker, a GIS position. That's it. And then, as far as the parks, the recreation staffing, what we projected is three positions in twenty twenty-seven that will start prior to construction being done. Those are HR, IT, and a facilities manager, so that way we can adequately staff and build our internal support prior to the rec center being done. And then, the rest of the staffing starts in twenty twenty-eight, when we anticipate the rec center being done.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I have some other questions about the phase one and the fifty percent sales tax revenue. Does that go back to the developer, or does that go back to the individual businesses?
It goes back to the developer for infrastructure improvements.
Okay, and it only applies to phase one? So when phase two comes online, I expect we'll have some sort of requests related to that. Who knows? But it doesn't apply to phase two?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, Lisa, I know we've moved to a new software system, so the budget looks a little bit different this year. Compared to last year, I'm seeing less granularity at the department level. And that's been a little bit of a challenge, I think, to totally understand what's going on. We have a lot of detail on the CIP items, but kind of understanding what's, what's going on in the other aspects. Are you able to provide to council some more granularity that we can look at?
Sure, I can provide an expenditure by expense object group by department, so it'll break out by wages, salaries, benefits, like eight categories by department. I can, I can provide that in the budget document.
That'd be helpful to be able to review. And then, the other item is to be able to better understand the construction projects that we're committed to that are potentially requiring us to borrow that fourteen million. It'd be helpful to understand what those projects are and kind of what, what the commitment is.
Yep.
Other questions in the budget, councilman Mike?
I just have a quick follow-up to what Bill was asking about related to Ladera, the phase one. I know it was capped at five million and, I believe, ten years. Do you happen to know when that started and will end? Because I cannot remember.
I can't either, off the top of my head, so I will look at that agreement and I'll send an email.
That would be great, yeah, because I know it was an amount or a timeframe. So if they don't reach that amount, it would still cap at a certain timeframe. That'd be great, thank you.
I guess piggybacking off that, because I didn't realize that existed. Is it, was it a contract that started phase, so whether it was the first person in phase one on January of twenty-three, or whatever it may be, or does it start from the new build of each location? Did they get a full ten years, five million, or?
No, it started from the first building that went in.
Okay, and, and five million total in that phase, not five million per business?
Correct.
Got it, okay, makes sense, thank you. Sure, but it's, I mean, it seems like it might be years already and, and dollars already towards it too, so. But again, if it's going for infrastructure and, and, you know, that type of stuff, I get it.
Any other questions? Then that being said, all those in favor of approving on first reading and setting a public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 P. M. For the ordinance as previously read, which is essentially the budget, is there, is there a motion to, to approve that?
So moved.
All right, so a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the budget on first reading and setting the public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 P. M. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Thank you. We will talk about this closer to Christmas. All right, item seven G, first reading and setting a public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 P. M. For ordinance number twenty-six, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending the town budget for the twenty twenty-five budget year.
Yes, this is a change just as a result of our new funds, essentially. If you think about each fund as a business unit, we need to appropriate dollars based on those fund levels. So previously, when we went over in one of these categories, it was in one fund, and we didn't need to do a supplemental appropriation because it was covered in other areas. But now that we have this fund breakout, it results in the need to do an additional supplemental in specific funds. The general fund specifically had higher-than-anticipated fund balance from twenty twenty-four that resulted in higher transfers to establish those new funds. So what we had anticipated, the revenue and the ending fund balance for Parks and Rec and capital improvements and capital expansion fees was lower than what actually happened. So that estimate is one point eight million dollars above budget. And then, the Parks and Rec Fund had a rec center feasibility study and branding project that began in twenty twenty-four, but the budget did not carry over. So there's a need for it to adjust that fund as well. As you can see, those are two specific funds that we need to increase the appropriation for, but overall, we're going to be under budget because we will have eleven million dollars approximately that we will not spend. Some of that is in capital projects that will get carried over into twenty twenty-six, and some of it is in actual savings.
Mayor Protem?
Lisa had to explain this to me in great detail. So if I'm understanding correctly, Lisa, like, as we are expanding the town and we're starting to get into more detail, we are creating more funds. And so, as a town, this is actually an improvement in our accounting process, first and foremost, right?
Yep.
But that's what I think I'm taking away first from this. Looking to the general fund, and let me ask a second question before I jump. When we do, looking maybe back to our twenty twenty-five budget versus, all the way back to twenty twenty-four budget to twenty twenty-five and then twenty twenty-six, we have a lot more transfers that maybe, if you're looking at the budgets, we didn't go from a forty million dollar budget to a hundred million dollar budget.
Right.
And so, what we're seeing here in general is we have a lot more transfers between what are our funds now. And so, looking to say, one of these appropriations is now a transfer, is that correct?
Yeah, you have to include the transfers as appropriations, and I will break that out when we do the budget adoption, so it's clear on how much the transfers are. The transfers were higher in twenty twenty-five because we had to establish those new funds. And so, everything was in the general fund, and then we had to do transfers to accommodate those new funds.
Okay, so as we continue to expand as a town, we're just going to have more and more transfers, right? Or less transfers, that's the?
Less transfers than twenty twenty-five because that's, we needed to establish those new funds, but there will still be some transfers, for example, between capital expansion fees and capital improvements. So as we incur capital improvements that are eligible for impact fees, you'll see a transfer between those two funds.
And does the TDA just go into the general fund?
The TDA, it includes a transfer, and that's the revenue on the general fund and an expenditure on the TDA.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, so, so again, just so I understand, the, the transfer is one, but the Parks and Rec was the feasibility study?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and those numbers may go down, like I mentioned earlier, we, we're realizing savings in our health insurance and so forth, and some forecasting from twenty twenty-five will revamp prior to budget adoption. So those numbers won't go up, they'll go down if anything.
There is mud, right? I think it makes sense, like, I totally agree that we continue to need to get more granular as we expand. But I think, as we look ahead, the Parks and Rec, will all of the new, with the new rec center, is that all going to be contained within the Parks and Rec general fund?
No, there will be an entirely new fund.
So there'll be a new fund, so we will now have a new fund.
Yeah. Special revenue fund.
Special revenue fund, okay, some more, more funds, okay.
Yeah, I have some comments if it's appropriate.
But, still, questions?
Questions, sorry, all right, I'll wait.
Quick question, but maybe a tricky one. I'm a huge fan of savings, and I love the parentheses, because that means we get money still. So how much of that eleven million will be carried over, and how much of it is truly, we did our job and we saved money?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can get that, yeah. There, there was savings on some of our capital projects where we were under budget, but a large portion of that will roll forward.
Which is, again, more looking to, you know, I think we, we give kudos when kudos are due, but it's very rare that projects go under budget, they're mostly over budget. So, yeah, I'd love to see if there's a breakout, like, hey, don't be too excited, because eleven million's transferring and it's only three hundred, which is still great. But if there, if there's, you know, some areas that we can find of, of celebration and also build on that in the future to figure out how we trimmed it and how we can continue to do that, especially with costs going up, especially in capital improvements. I know that that's a big piece moving forward. Projects never stop as we grow, so how do we hone in on what we did to save here and, and build that into the future?
And I think if I show the transfers at the next meeting, you'll see savings in the general fund as well. It's just going up because of the transfers, so there was savings in the general fund as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do actually have a question.
Go ahead.
So capital expansion was budgeted at ten million, we spent two six. Was that a, what specifically did we decide not to expand?
So they're related to the capital improvements, and so whatever projects didn't get funded that were impact fee-related, those went down. In addition, we had more in TDA, so I utilized those first. So the TDA will account for some of those capital projects before the capital expansion fees.
And Lisa, why do you utilize the TDA first?
Because that's going to expire in twenty twenty-nine, and we can roll over the expansion fees.
Any more questions? Thank you, and thank you for taking my phone call earlier this week and walking this, walking me through it as well. All right, is there a motion to approve on first reading and set a public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 P. M. For ordinance number twenty-six, series twenty-five, an ordinance amending the town budget for the twenty twenty-five budget year?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bill, you have comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm hoping we can dig into this a little bit more. And I understand having more funds is probably actually a better process, so you can track it more accurately. I guess I'd like to see more precision on our, overall on our budget and where we end up at the end of the year, so we're not off by, you know, fifty, fourteen percent in the overall budget. And I, I know we're transitioning, so there are probably some one-time things that are, make this a little special, but hopefully, in the future, we can kind of get it dialed in a little, little closer so that our actual budget, estimated budget at the beginning of the year matches the budget at the end of the year pretty closely.
Yeah, we'll do our best, capital projects can be tricky, though, so.
Yeah, and I realize that, and they move to the next year, and yet, you haven't really spent the money, but you're going to spend it. And you're probably going to spend more, because it's being, the project's being delayed, and costs always go up, so I get it.
All right, other comments? And all those in favor of approving this on first reading and setting the public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 P. M. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? December ninth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 P. M. Will be our public hearing evening. All right, item seven H, first reading and setting a public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 P. M. For ordinance number twenty-seven, series twenty twenty-five, ordinance appointing Stuart W. Olive as municipal judge for a six-month term.
Thank you, so per your town charter, there are three positions that report directly to the council and are appointed by the council, it's the town manager, the town attorney, and the town municipal judge. As you know, we have our municipal court that meets once a month, and Judge Olive has been the judge for, going back to nineteen ninety-seven. His term, his current contract does expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and per the recommendation of the town clerk, she felt it would be helpful to go out for requests for proposals and then to come back with you to, with you guys, to you with the recommendations and the results of that search. So what's proposed is to reappoint current Judge Olive for an additional six-month term to go through the end of June, twenty twenty-six, which would allow the town to have time to go out for requests for proposals. I've already talked to Judge Olive and encouraged him to submit a proposal and let him know that we certainly appreciate his service. And, and, you know, he's, he's comfortable with the proposal before you tonight. and, you know, he's, he's comfortable with the proposal before you tonight.
Thank you, any questions?
And I presume he, uh, would be, uh, open to reapply in the RFP process as well.
He didn't indicate that he would not be, so I would assume also that he would probably propose, but...
Wait and see.
Thank you, Carolyn, I appreciate that, appreciate your work on this. I've mentioned it to you, I've, I've chatted with council. Um, I, I think, um, what makes sense is, um, for us as council to check in uh, with the stakeholders, both related to the judge and the prosecutor. Um, and so, um, we're gonna be doing that, just kind of getting some feedback, uh, how things are going, and we just haven't done that in a while, so I just wanted to mention that, that that's something we'll, we'll do while this process is going on. Uh, alright, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve on first reading and to set a public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty five at six P M? Uh, for an ordinance appointing Stuart W. Olive as municipal judge for a six-month term?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Carries five zero. Uh, on to a public hearing. Uh, this will be item eight A, ordinance number twenty one, series twenty twenty five, and ordinance amending the G I D establishing ordinance.
Thank you, so the town council has approved the organization of the Timnith Landing, Town of Timnith dash Timnith Landing General Improvement District. And this would amend the establishing ordinance, which was passed in twenty nineteen, that first established, established that general improvement district, to make just one change, and the change is related to what we had discussed with the business improvement district, to allow the mill levy rate to be adjusted to account for changes in the method of calculating the assessed valuation, or other statutorily required, and impose credits or changes in classifications. And so, right now, the G I D does have an aggregate mill levy limit of fifteen mills for a forty-year term, and the G I D is looking at issuance of debt, and that will be before you, sitting as, uh, the board of the G I D at a future meeting. And this would allow the G I D, when they set a mill levy, to go slightly over fifteen mills if there was a change in the ratio of actual value to assessed value. Now, this one is primarily a residential property, so it does tie that adjustment to the residential rate, um, tying it to approximately the current rate, and allows for adjustments for any changes. The changes from... Six point eight. Okay, so, um, currently, the, hmm, the state legislature has really imposed a very complicated, um, way of calculating the, um, taxes for residential properties for this year and next year. So it does change from six point eight, goes down to six point seven, goes back to six point eight. In addition, there are credits for the first fifty thousand dollars of assessed valuation, so this just tries to smooth that out, and we have heard from our financial advisor that it will be easier to issue debt if the amount of money you can collect will stay the same as what you could collect if the assessment rate stayed at six point eight percent into the future, even if the state legislature changes that. So you'll take the actual value times six point eight percent, and then the mill levy will be, um, multiplied by that number, instead of multiplied by the assessed valuation. Um, so it may allow, and then that's the amount you can collect, we backdate it, back it in to figure out what the mill levy would be, so it may be fifteen point eight, it may be fifteen point nine. So it might adjust a little bit up or down to account for those legislative changes in how the assessed valuation is calculated.
Thank you, before we go to council questions, uh, this is slated for a public hearing. I don't believe anyone has signed up, uh, but I'll now open the floor and ask if anyone's present who would like to speak on it. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move on to council questions.
So, I get what, what they're trying to do, and it makes sense from, um, from a financing perspective. I guess my only question is, um, since it's based, the fluctuation is based in part on any credits that would decrease revenue, and any change in valuation that would, uh, decrease or increase revenue, because the target is to keep the dollars flowing at a, at a predictable, uh, value to cover, um, to cover the bondholders, right, which...
Well, if the val- if the actual value goes up, the amount that's collected would still go up. Or if it goes down, it's gonna go down. So what you're gonna do is you're gonna take the actual value, and then find out how much money you'd collect based on the actual value, and six point eight percent. So that if it drops below six point eight percent, we can collect what we would have collected if the ratio stayed at six point eight percent.
Right, and as, yeah. Yeah, that, now it makes sense to me. And it's not affected by if there are more new homes, or any of that won't impact it at, at all. It's just this predictability between six point eight and the fifteen, fifteen mills, which is what the bondholder signed up for, got it?
Yep, you got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve an ordinance amending the G I D establishing ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I think it makes sense. If I were a bondholder, I'd be looking at this or asking for more interest, cover my concerns.
All those in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? The ordinance carries unanimously. Um, our last agenda item is an executive session. Uh, so at this time, I'll call, uh, executive session, uh, we will take five, yeah. Um, is there a motion to move to executive session pursuant to C R S twenty four six four oh two four F for discussion of personnel matters related to the annual review of the town manager? So moved.
So. Second.
Been moved and seconded, um, all those in favor of moving to executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we will move to executive session.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we are back on the record having concluded our executive session. We have no more agenda items, so we shall stand adjourned.
Nobody has. That.[1788.94][1788.94](laughter)
There's always, there's always someone that, forward to the end. I knew how it ended. Someone was sitting there.